We'll start on time. I'd like to welcome everybody to this last meeting in 2019, Monday, December 16th, and we'll start off with invocation. Archbishop Slater, please, sir. Please stand.
City Council, shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this opportunity again to come back and do your bidding for every citizen that's in this city. But Father, we thank you for the months that have gone by. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to still be here, which should tell us that we have an assignment to do. Father, we pray for our mayor, for recovery, pray for healing. We pray for healing of this city, and we thank you in advance for the increase even for next year. We thank you, Lord, for everyone who has a voice in this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor President Roberts.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilman Gopala.
Present.
Councilman Matthews.
Present.
Councilman DeHamm.
Yeah.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
Minutes are approved. Need a motion? Now we have approval of the minutes of the meeting of November the 18th, 2019. Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Motion hit.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion?
I was gonna say, you second. Who made the motion?
No one made it down here.
You make it down there.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2019.
Okay, second. Motion. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. We now have two presentations. The first one, and I'm gonna read it first, and this is one that somebody we really hate to leave, but it's a resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Gigi Easton as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than 30 years, whereas Gigi Easton retires on 1st of January 2020 as an engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than 30 years of service, and where Gigi began her career on May 31st, 1989, as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department, and on August 11th, 1999, Gigi was promoted to fire engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department where she has served until her retirement. Gigi has proven herself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and citizens of the City of Goldsboro, whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, city employees, and citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Gigi Easton their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over the years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we express to Gigi our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in our future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this 16th day, December 2019.
Move to adopt the resolution expressing appreciation to Gigi Easton.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Ms. Easton? We have a presentation. Okay, Chief. You want to start off? You don't dare.
Okay.
And we'll just start off that for the last 30 years, Gigi has been a valued member of our team, and she will be missed, but she's going on to the next chapter, which is back in the bag, her grandbaby, so she'll be able to devote her time to being a full-time grandma. Do you want to say anything?
I just wanna say, Gigi was my, when I first came into fire service in 1999, I worked at headquarters station. Ms. Easton, Ocean Man, I've always called you engineer Gigi, or Ms. Gigi, out of respect, and we all owe a mission.
I appreciate you. And anytime we lose a fire, one of our firemen, especially one with 30 years' experience, because you've seen a lot of fires, we really appreciate it, and we congratulate the family. Gigi, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, come on. Get back here, you're something. Okay, thank you. Our second one is our second resolution is Ms. Julie Metz. Read this, Resolution 2019/108, Resolution Expressing Appreciation to Julie Metz for Service to the City of Goldsboro for More Than 24 Years. Whereas Julie Metz became working with the City of Goldsboro as a city planner specializing in transportation and community development planning in 1993. For two years between 1995 and 1997, Julie left the city to work with a private consulting firm, but returned to the city in 1997 to again be a city planner, and in 1999, Julie transformed into downtown economic development as the city's Downtown Development Director at Downtown Goldsboro Development Corporation as the executive director. And Julie led a visionary master plan in 2007, which paved the way for the development we enjoy today. Julie was also responsible for securing the City of Goldsboro 2013 Transportation Infrastructure Generating Economic Recovery, what we all called the Tiger Five, award of $10 million by strategically developing the project proposal, gaining support of elected officials and partners in preparing, writing, and grant application. Julie was also responsible for securing a second Tiger Grant in 2016 of $5 million for Goldsboro, which led to the completion of the last block of Center Street, the redesign of Cornerstone Commons into the hub, wayfinding signage, and a concourse at the transfer station. Julie led efforts that resulted in $21.6 million in grant money for the city downtown, $596,000 in community contributions for downtown, and approximately $842,000 of in-kind assistance for downtown in the last nine years. These years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the city and the downtown community for the better of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that the mayor and the city council express you, Julie Metz, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and citizens of the City of Goldsboro, our appreciation and gratitude for your unselfish, devoted, and invaluable service and contributions rendered to the City of Goldsboro. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this 16th day. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
The second. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay. Ms. Julie, she's hiding in the back.
Can I, I'm gonna present this, but I think some of the council would like to say a few things to you, but you look surprised.
I am.
You've never been a lost word.
No, I haven't.
I don't know what you would be now.
I would just like to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to be in this role and to help work with you to shape a new future for our downtown and to improve the image and the economic climate for the City of Goldsboro. And, you know, I just, it's just been a great, a great job, a great journey, and I've loved working with all the professionals that we get to work with in the city organization and all the elected officials who dedicate so much time. So, thank you for the honor. It's been a great one.
Well, I'm just gonna say one thing. I saw Julie, she'd been here about two weeks, and I was a baby, and she lost her pocketbook. The 22-year-old losing her pocketbook was a major thing.
I got Christmas time, too.
I know. Walk outside now, and we see what Julie's done for us and what she's done now. I think there's a lot of good work, hard work, and we appreciate what you did.
Thank you, sir.
You made a believer out of me. When I joined the city council eight years ago, and so what kind of money that was gonna cost to do the next two blocks, I said, "That's a big waste of money." But it's, you proved me wrong. I never thought we'd see this amount of activity on Center Street ever again in my life. So, thank you.
I first met this lady in 2000, when she was about 20 years old, and a little bit more than that. But she came to-
Hey, we're giving you credit.
She came to give a presentation on DGDC back then, as it was then. I was impressed with her during the presentation, and I went down to introduce myself to her afterwards. And I came home and I told my wife about her. And my wife went down to meet Julie as well and became a board member on DGDC. We left a few years after that, but during that time, I got to know her, and we left, as I said. But we kept in contact, not all the time, but periodically, because we still had an interest in Goldsboro. And we came back, and one of the first individuals I met and talked to when I came back was Julie. I wanted to know what was going on, and I got an opportunity to see what was going on at the time and what was planned, and I wanted to get involved in it. And I got, I applied for the process to get on the board. Didn't happen automatically, but I did get on the board. And throughout these years, I've had an opportunity to work with her, both here in Goldsboro and away from Goldsboro, activities that involved downtown development. She's a truly dedicated woman. She's killing her time. She has a passion for Goldsboro, and there's evidence that's been talked about tonight of her, her work here, her time, her energies, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I just, well, I just recently met Ms. Julie within the past month since my appointment to this office, and I'm quite sure she'd heard a lot of things I said about disseminating resources outside of Goldsboro downtown. But in our talk, she's opened herself up and let me know that she is willing to work forward toward that, and I appreciate her listening.
Councilman Wigg?
Wow. I think I met Julie's daughter, Ruthie, before I met Julie. That's about in 2007, so it's been some time that we've interacted with each other. I know what you've done here hasn't been easy. I'm thankful. I appreciate what you've done, and I just wish you success on, you know, your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The next order, Justice, is Councilman Williams has a certificate of appreciation.
Yes. Back on December 8th, there was a gentleman that was having some issues pertaining to dementia, and there was a citizen here. He's here today, Mr. Robert Daniel, and he caught right away that there was something going on with this gentleman. This gentleman was 84 years old, and that's him in the pictures, and he was on his way to Florida from New Bern. He left around 8:00 in the morning, and he got to Goldsboro around 9:30 PM. And had fate not brought him to Mr. Daniels, I think that he could have been in serious trouble. And Mr. Daniels was kind. He even took the time to make sure that he could stay with him overnight so that he wouldn't get missing. This man didn't have a telephone. He didn't remember numbers of family members, and that could be any of our family members. And what he did was very humane. And not just Mr. Daniels, but we had other individuals. We had Officer Kenny previous. He couldn't be here today. He's actually in training, but he was just so, so wonderful. He did detective work, and he found the number. We didn't get the number, but he found the number. He reached out to his sister, and he went beyond his duties as well. The Holiday Inn, they were tremendous in making sure he was comfortable. They went beyond their duties as a hoteler, and I'm just so thankful for the humanity here in our city. So, I wanna honor Mr. Daniels here today. We have a certificate of appreciation. Can you come on up, sir?
That's too kind. Anyway, thank you very much. I've had a bit of a cold, so a little hoarse. But anyway, thank you. But I would have done it for anyone, and certainly hoped that someone would have done it for me to somewhere else, but thank you.
That's all you've got to say?
Everyone. I like living in Goldsboro.
Do we have anybody from the hotel here? Councilman Williams?
Yes.
I can tell you what he said a while ago. I've known him for 35 years. He would have done it for anyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. We do not, but I'm sure you're gonna present that to the hotel.
Yeah, I'll make sure that the Holiday Inn gets this. And he made it home to his family in Florida. We took him to the airport, made sure he got on the plane, and so he's safe now.
We now move to item six, our public hearing. We've got our Plan Commission here. We thank you guys for coming, and our first item is CU-13-19. Ms. Collins.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Item 13, our CU 1319, is Jerry Futral. The property is located on the east side of US 117 South between Arrington Bridge Road and South George Street. The applicant's requesting an increase in electronic gaming machines from 35 to 101 for an existing internet cafe. An internet cafe was previously approved for 20 gaming machines at this location on September the 3rd of 2013. On June 2nd of 2014, city council denied a request to increase the number of gaming machines from 25 to 35 based on requiring two parking spaces per machine. On August 4th of 2014, the council approved a parking ordinance amendment to the city's UDO requiring one and a half parking spaces per machine. In addition, they approved the previous owner's request to allow an increase in the number of gaming machines from 20 to 35. The previous owner closed the business in March of 2016 upon order from the district attorney's office. Once software upgrades were installed and in compliance with state law, he reapplied for a conditional use permit to operate an internet cafe in accordance with the city's UDO. City council approved site, landscape, and floor plans for the previously approved 35 gaming machines on January the 3rd of 2017. On May 8th of 2017, city council amended the city's electronic gaming ordinance. The following requirements were approved as they pertain to a new gaming establishment proposed for operation in the City of Goldsboro's planning jurisdiction. Electronic gaming operations are permitted only in the general business zoning district after the attainment of a conditional use permit approved by city council. No establishment shall be located within 500 feet of any residentially zoned or developed property, church, school, daycare, playground, or public park. Where the proposed establishment is separated from residentially zoned or development property by a four-lane highway, the 500-foot separation shall only apply to the properties along the sides and rear of the establishment. No such establishment shall be located within one mile of another such establishment, and the hours of operation for such operations shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM. City council made no changes to the existing parking requirement of one and a half spaces per gaming machine. As previously stated, the applicant is requesting to amend an existing conditional use permit for the operation of an internet cafe to increase the number of gaming machines from 35 to 101. The property is on general business and hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week. Number of employees are two. Site and landscape plans for this operation were previously approved. In addition, parking requirements were in compliance with the city's UDO. At the time of approval, the following modifications were approved: rear yard landscape buffer due to grade separation at railroad tracks, vehicular surface buffer at front due to existing paving and public right-of-way, street tree requirement, and distance requirement from residentially zoned property from 200 feet to 125 feet. As indicated previously, the parking is required at one and a half space per gaming machine. The applicant contends that the city's current parking requirement is excessive based on the fact that only one customer can operate one gaming machine at any one time. Currently, there are 52 paved parking spaces to serve the site. 152 parking spaces are required. Parking areas are available to meet the city's current parking requirements north and east of the facility. However, the applicant does not desire to provide paved parking in accordance with city standards. As such, the applicant is requesting a modification of the city's parking requirement from 152 spaces to 52 parking spaces. At the applicant's request, due to family emergency, the applicant is unable to attend the public hearing tonight and is requesting that the public hearing remain open until January the 21st to allow him the opportunity to speak regarding this request. If there are any others in attendance tonight, and they've had the chance to speak regarding this request, staff is recommending that city council make a motion to keep the public hearing open until January the 21st, with planning commission having a recommendation for city council's meeting at your February 3rd, 2020, meeting. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. So, he wants to upgrade to 101 machines but wants to only have 50 spaces?
Two parking spaces, yes, sir.
I guess those other people carpool, and that's kinda-
Maybe, but there is adequate space. He just wishes not to pave. Any business in excess of three spaces should have paved parking. So, he is, with not wanting to pave, there's adequate space on site for parking. It's just he wishes not to pave, so he is requesting a modification.
This gentleman is asking for an extension of this public hearing, correct?
He is, yes, sir. It is because we got the request to, that he couldn't be in attendance tonight. We had already advertised for the public hearing, so we had to hold the public hearing. So, if there's anyone here tonight that wants to speak for or against, they may do so so that they do not have to come back in January, but the applicant is requesting to keep the public hearing open so that he has the option of being here. He did have a family emergency.
Okay, I'm gonna start off. This is a public hearing. If anyone wants to speak for or against, please come up right now. Anyone speaking for or against? Well, as normal, I will not close this hearing, but I will ask for a motion to continue until the next meeting to continue this public hearing.
I'll make a motion. We postpone it to the next meeting, because I have some questions I'd like to ask.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, we will. The next item is CU-14-19, Zakel Perry.
Item E is CU 1419, Zakel Perry. The property is located on the southwest corner of East Oak Street and North John Street intersection. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow operation of a used car lot within the general business district. The sale of used vehicles is a permitted use within the general business zoning district after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by city council. The property was previously operated as a used car lot. Since the business has been closed for more than six months, the applicant is required to reapplied for a conditional use permit for the, to sell used cars. The submitted site plan indicates an existing 1,000-square-foot building proposed for use as a sale office. The remainder of the property is mostly paved and is proposed for employee and customer parking, as well as a display of automobiles for sale. The applicant states there will be no outdoor storage on site. Hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM with two employees. Parking is required at one space per employee and five customer spaces. The applicant proposes up to seven display vehicle spaces, and the site plan indicates both customer and employee parking. No loading space will be required since all vehicles will be driven to the site. A type A 10-foot-wide landscape buffer is required along the southern property line, and existing vegetation fulfills this requirement. A type C 20-foot-wide landscape buffer is required adjacent to residentially developed property to the west. An existing chain-link fence with privacy slats is located between the subject property and an existing single-family dwelling. Due to limited space, the applicant is asking for a modification of the city's landscape requirement adjacent to the residentially developed property. The applicant is requesting the following modifications: street trees along North John and East Oak Street, vehicular surface area landscaping, and as previously mentioned, the landscaping required for the type C 20-foot-wide landscape buffer. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for city council's meeting on January the 7th. This is the site on the map, and then this is an elevation or a picture from the intersection.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone would like to speak for or against this proposal? This request? There being no, I will now close this public, close this portion of the public hearing, and excuse the Plan Commission. We've got two more, but you guys are free to go. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Now, Ms. Collins?
Item F is a public hearing for noncontiguous annexation requests. Louise Jimenez. The property is located on the east side of South NC 111 Highway between Molly Drive and Sheridan Forest Road. It is approximately 1.98 acres. The city council at their meeting held on November the 18th scheduled a public hearing for the proposed annexation of the subject property. A public hearing notice was properly advertised stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. Pursuant to General Statute 160A 58.2, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area proposed to be annexed, as well as the residents of the municipality, shall be given an opportunity to be heard on the proposed annexation. If the council determines that the proposed annexation meets all the requirements of the general statutes, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. In addition to those requirements, the city council adopted a policy which allows annexation of noncontiguous areas subject to a number of requirements. The following governing noncontiguous annexations requirements are as follows: the areas located within one mile of the established city limit line, the city's ability to contract for the provision of fire and police protection, and in no instance shall a noncontiguous area have an adverse effect upon the city's overall annexation plans. Just wanna touch on a couple of things with regards to fire and police protection. The city can provide fire protection to the subject property as well as police protection. There's no public street included within the petition for annexation. City water lines are not available to serve the property. Wayne Water District maintains an existing 12-inch water line along this section of NC Highway 111 South. City sanitary sewer lines are available to serve the property. The estimated revenue for the property is based on the assessed valuation of 2018, which at that time is vacant land. The land value estimate is $542.50 with the estimated return of $352.63. If you recall, in 2019, we did approve development for this property of a repair with outdoor-
If you recall, in two thousand and nineteen, we did approve development for this property of an auto, a repair with outdoor storage. So a new building will be erected, and obviously, tax values will increase based on that. If annexed, this property will be added to District number two, and the proposed annexation meets the policy requirements of non-contiguous annexation requirements. So it is recommended by motion that after the public hearing, get back to my little, adopt the ordinance, annexing Louis Jimenez' property effective December the thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Any questions for staff?
Do I have a motion?
It's a public hearing. We'll need to see if anyone wants to speak. And then after so, you have to entertain a motion for the ordinance.
This is a public hearing. I thought we had one before, but that's fine. This is, is anyone would like to speak for or against this proposal? If not, public hearing is closed. We'll go. Now, we ask for, and now we ask for a motion. A motion to approve this request.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Next public hearing. Are we going to have that?
Good evening. Our final public hearing tonight is a public hearing to consider an incentive grant agreement with Michael Arum and Wayne County. Michael Arum Incorporated has developed plans for the installation of machinery and equipment in expanding its existing facility located in Goldsboro, North Carolina. The City Council of Goldsboro believes the location of new industries and expansion of existing industries is vital to the economic health of Goldsboro and the welfare of its citizens. The City Council wishes to encourage such development by means of offering incentives to recruit new industries and to aid in expansion of existing industries. The company is expected to create over a hundred and sixteen new jobs at this facility owner before December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and pay an additional eight thousand dollars per year in property taxes to the city. Pursuant to state law, a public hearing is being held on the proposal to provide economic incentives to Michael Arum Incorporated totaling a hundred thousand dollars over a five-year period based on an incentive agreement with a five million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollar capital investment in the creation of at least a hundred and sixteen jobs over that period. Following conducting a public hearing and depending on comments received, staff would recommend that council consider adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an economic grant agreement with Michael Arum Incorporated. Any questions?
This is a public hearing. Anyone having comments for or against, please come forward. If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item Z. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Very good. Public comment. That's all of our public hearings. Now we go to item six, public comment period. Public comment period is a period of three minutes. We ask you not to go beyond that. We ask you to maintain decorum in this chamber. If you have any questions, please come forward. You have three minutes. Do I have any public comment?
Yes.
I don't have any questions. What I would like to say is, Councilman Williams, it's so good to see you back in this city. I haven't been able to get to a meeting since the elections were over yet. And Councilmember Pollock and Councilmember Matthews, it is fandang-tastic to see some fresh faces up there. And I hope, and this is directed at you in particular because I don't know you, I hope that you will work with Councilmember Pollock and Antonio Williams to keep this city going. All right? Now, somebody has taken down the pedestrian crossing sign from in front of the Wayne's Borough House. Yeah, the one where y'all got out here in front of here and where you have in front of the pool rooms and the bars and this and that and the other. Where you got in the middle of the street uphill. But somebody has taken that sign down, and it needs to be put back up because I'm going to tell you, like I said before, if I get hurt trying to cross that street, the city of Goldsboro is going to be on the tag board.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll certainly look into that.
Well, I certainly hope so because if you don't, I'm going to be back up here at the next meeting and the one after that and the one after that until that thing gets replaced. Do I make myself clear?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Y'all have a good evening. And where's the mayor?
Mayor's sick at this time, ma'am. He's unable to attend.
What's wrong with it?
I'm not free to talk about that in open session.
Okay. Y'all have a good evening.
Yes, ma'am. Any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment. Mister City Manager, consents agenda items?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda items H through L are presented for council approval.
Motion to approve consent agenda items H through L. Second. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve agenda items H through L. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Just a roll call.
Roll call, I gotta do a roll call, okay.
Mayor President Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollock?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes. Yes.
We have no items, individual action?
No, sir.
City manager, sir?
Yes, sir. So a lot going on this time of year. I'd like to thank the Paramount Theater for again hosting The Nutcracker and The Christmas Story. Some great successes there. Recognize the Goldsboro Event Center. They hosted seven events this past week. One with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, two with the county, and four with the city. One of those was our city and county state of the community. And you can find that out on YouTube or Facebook if you'd like to see those presentations. Also like to recognize our Parks and Recreation for hosting again many events at the Bryan Multi-Sport Complex. We have the United States Youth Soccer Association with over a hundred and forty-four teams participating from all over the United States. We have the North Carolina Football Club Boys Showcase Tournament with forty teams. And they also did the Jingle in the Park, which was held at Herman Park on Friday with fifteen hundred people attending estimated, and on Saturday with three thousand people, many of which came from the well-attended downtown Christmas parade. So thanks to our city employees for making all that happen this time of year. Thank you, sir.
I have a, before we go into city council comments, I have two resolutions. Resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Roosevelt Johnson, who's employed in the city of Goldsboro for more than twenty-seven years. Whereas Roosevelt Johnson retires on January first, two thousand and twenty, is a compost plant operator with the Public Utilities Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than twenty-seven years of service. Whereas Roosevelt began his career on April the twenty-second, nineteen ninety-two, as a Laborer One with the Public Works Department. Whereas on Ju-, July fourteenth, nineteen ninety-three, Roosevelt was promoted to Equipment Operator One with the Public Works. On June the twenty-sixth, two thousand and two, Roosevelt was transferred to the Public Utilities Department as a Motor Equipment Operator Two. In January two thousand and fourteen, Roosevelt's position was reclassified as a compost plant operator with the Public Utilities Department, where he served until his retirement. Whereas Roosevelt has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public service who's gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. And whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, city employees and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Roosevelt Johnson their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro that we express to Roosevelt our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after the sixteenth day of December, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? I have one more. Those people with thirty years, twenty-seven years, twenty-four years. We're losing a lot of people. Resolution, two thousand and nineteen, one-ten. Resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Reginald Hendrick as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than twenty-four years. Whereas Reginald Hendrick retires on January the first, two thousand and twenty, as a water plant operator four with the Public Utilities Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than twenty-four years of service. Whereas Reginald began his career on April the twelfth, nineteen ninety-five, as a water plant operator with the Public Utilities Department. On September the twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-seven, Reginald was promoted to Water Plant Operator Two with the Public Utility Service. On March the tenth, nineteen ninety-nine, Reginald was promoted to up, Plant, Water Plant Operator Three with the Public Utilities Department. And on May the twenty-third, two thousand and seven, Reginald was promoted to Water Plant Operator Four Public Utilities Department, where he served until his retirement. Reginald has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public service who's gained the admiration and respect of fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, city employees and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Reginald Hendrick their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro that we express to Reginald our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after the sixteenth day. Do I have a motion?
Moved to adopt.
Motion to, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? That's it. Now we do go to City Manager. We've had jurors. Let's start on the left, left side this time. Councilman Acog.
I don't have a whole lot to say. I did notice coming from my home today that there's a whole lot more traffic than there's been. And it's only going to get worse between now and New Year's. And I want everybody to pay attention to when you're driving. As I said last year, there's a lot of people who are more interested in shopping than they are stopping. So I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year.
I'll be short also. I'll just thank the citizens of Goldsboro for what they've contributed to make our city a better place this year. And hopefully that endeavor will continue next year. I wish all of you here in the audience, as well as those that were watching tonight, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
So thank everyone for being here tonight. It is still an honor to serve in this capacity. I didn't say anything to Julie because I didn't prepare anything formally, but I do wish you well on your next chapter. Best wishes to you. Happy holidays. Be safe, and look forward to seeing you in the New Year.
I just want to say thank you for the positive energy that was shared tonight. I see a more cohesive unit moving into the New Year. I look forward to ushering in any new ideas or soliciting any ideas from our constituents that can make this city prosper. I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
I would like for all of us to pray for the quick recovery of Mayor Allen so we can get him back with us. This is the Christmas season. When I was downtown, I couldn't believe the number of people who'd been downtown almost every, every night, and that's good. The last thing is, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe Christmas. Let's all be back here in January. That's all I have, sir.
I want to acknowledge Councilman Foster. He was here, he left. You know, he's still concerned about what's happening in the city. That's always a plus, you know. Want to acknowledge Mayor Allen, you know, asking everyone to pray for him and his family. And I just wish everyone a happy holiday. God bless you. Good night.
Closed session.
Closed session. I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
Do I have a second? Second. Go ahead into closed session.
It's about economic development slash litigation.
Yeah, for economic development.